Under God, in the name of the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Okay, may we have the roll call?
Garth Wise.
Here.
Melvin Boyd.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
Okay. All righty. Community open session, thirty minutes, divided equally among those who wish to speak. If you wish to speak, would you raise a hand? And your name?
Cam Martin.
Thank you. Okay. Jeff, you're up.
Okay, as you done with Saw, I've provided you with our fire company year-end report again. Buried in some of the financial information, you'll see that our income has gone up by ten percent this year, which is wonderful, we always appreciate that. Unfortunately, our costs went up thirty-three percent. So it's, you know, the good and the bad there. We do have some fairly big expenses coming up this year. We need to replace a roof for about twenty thousand dollars. We have a committee established to replace our nineteen ninety pumper, something that will probably run us around five hundred thousand dollars. As you'll see also in the accounting information, we do have an apparatus fund already established for a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and a money market account for also two hundred and twenty-five thousand, as well as low-interest loans available with us. So we're, I think, going to be well-prepared for whatever we do when that time comes. Our membership has increased this year, while many other departments keep losing people. We're very fortunate. Our personnel has been increasing. Our community does a fine job in supporting us with all our functions. They come in and help us out with our dinners and our meals. And financially, we see approximately forty-four percent return on our fundraising. While always you'd love to see higher numbers, we do find that from what we're hearing, that's actually quite good in comparison to what we see and hear from neighboring areas. And as always, we are extremely grateful for the support that the township does provide us. Thank you.
Thank you. I suspect that it wouldn't be as high as forty-four percent if you didn't do such a good job.
I'd like to believe that has something to do with it, yes. We actually have a couple of the wives that do a phenomenal job of keeping up with that. They spend a tremendous amount of time pondering over records for tenants that change continually and personnel that changes. And we just try and get everything out there and everybody that we can. And sure, it'd be nice to, you know, avoid the taxation situation. And while things continue to go as they are, we're blessed, really.
And so are we.
Yes, yes, we are. When I vote, I walk through the, and look at the pictures and marvel at how, over the years, the continuity of the leadership and the membership of the fire company there. It's quite a, quite a wonderful thing.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah. I believe you have an opening as an alderman in the Southern Hearing Board. I had stopped until an application the other week. And the only reason I just stopped in here, you might want to put a face to a name, so you know who I am. I'm retiring in July, I'm just looking to get a little more involved, so that's the only reason I stopped, just to let you know.
Okay, well, we, we knew that you had applied. Unfortunately, I didn't get to the last page of my agenda until today, or else I would have called you to introduce us to you. But we do appreciate your willingness to serve as a volunteer. And I suspect that before the meeting is over, that you will be officially installed.
Do I need to stick around for that?
Only if you don't believe me.
My wife sent me to the grocery store because of the storm coming. I got a little bit of stuff up, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being at the store, and you're here.
All righty. Semi-announcement, as I think all of us know, there was a township resident who went out with their dog and died. And I think it sort of impressed upon me that, hey, we don't have a guarantee. And that it's nice, especially when you pass thirty-nine like I did. It's good to have somebody know where you are, it's good to have a buddy, a partner. And I imagine there are a number of people who wish, boy, if I had only done this or done that. And, you know, you see, you see the commercials on TV for, you know, "Help, I fall and I can't get up." And it, I guess, a wireless phone helps. I suppose that just pushing a button is even, is even more efficient. But I think it's something for each of us to keep in mind, not only for ourselves, but for our loved ones. And with that, we'll go on to the minutes.
I have read the minutes for the January fourteenth meeting. I see, I see there's one change in the attendance.
I changed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And we have some bills and a revised total.
A move that we pay the bill in the amount of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, it's seven hundred and twelve dollars and eight cents.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think a good bit of that covers our imported salt. I think I saw about twelve thousand dollars' worth of salt, and that was not all of it.
Right.
Okay. Reports. Arthur, anything to add to your report?
Yeah, there's two things. I don't ask for much, but there's one thing that we could use. I could use a backup driver. If, now, there's a driver for each truck, but you never know when one's going to get sick or there's an emergency at home. With a storm like this one that's coming, it, it gets more critical because you've got to keep on the move. And should conditions get bad and you get a twelve-inch snow or more, that prompts more so the need for the backhoe, sometimes cut through somewhere, so that trucks can follow. If anybody knows somebody. To drive one of the five-fifties or the smaller International, it only takes a regular driver's license. It would have to be somebody who stays alert and wants to do it. We really should have somebody on that list, because I know Levi can do it. But it'd be nice if we had a backup driver. It really would. If anybody knows anybody, I guess in a worse, to worse situation, if anybody come up with somebody and you wouldn't need them, I guess, could always be passed on to the board of supervisors and made it retroactive later.
If it was an emergency.
If it was an emergency.
Yeah, yes.
But to keep them trucks moving, especially in a storm that's significant, and we don't know what's coming, we have no idea yet. And the supervisors, one of yous can jump in more than trucks anytime.
I think we're too old.
No, you're not.
Speak for yourself.
No, you're not.
I think Gar's too old.
But just something, if, if you know anybody.
The last time you asked, a number of years ago, I mentioned my neighbor Dean Martin, and you called him. And I think he's a busy guy, but it might be worth a call.
He did say he didn't want to at that time.
I thought he did at that time.
He did, at that time he said he didn't want to, and so did his dad. I think we asked his dad, too.
So. And the thing that, that's so tough is, if you're really going to stick with it and do a good job, you're there from start to finish. And it can be anywhere from twelve to twenty hours. And I already got word to the Turnpike, they're calling in every available employee. And they've been told to be on, ready to be able to go forty hours straight if needed. The Turnpike crew has been told. So they're expecting, but nobody knows, we don't know at this point. I hate, I hate to have to do something with the backhoe, pushing back intersections, which we've had already. The trucks push back the intersections, you plow the snow up, and then a small car comes out and they can't see past. A lot of times, it takes a backhoe to knock that down, to do it towards a safety issue. I hate to see a truck sitting there if we had a driver to keep it on the move, especially on certain roads. And I always worry about if somebody gets sick, then there is a truck sitting.
Well, we're not asking for a volunteer. I think, I think the rate is about nineteen dollars an hour. Which, which, well...
I'll, I'll keep it in mind, and if I think you might need help, I'll call you. But I'd rather have the backhoe.
Of course.
Can you run a backhoe pretty good? All right.
The other thing is, twenty years ago, we had that older pickup truck out there, and they had gotten the snowflow on it. And they used it to try to plow the roads, which took its toll on the transmission. They stopped using it for that, which, it was never built for that. I don't know, somewhere ten years or so ago, we put that truck out for bid with the plow. And I think the highest bid we had was like a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars. For the truck to plow everything, well, we elected not to get rid of it at that price. It's been the truck that hauls the stinky trash out of the parks now for years. And you don't want to use a good vehicle, some of that trash really smells. But here we are, that plow, that western plow, the mount, everything, the mounts on the truck, the plows out there. The plow has sit in the side of that salt bin for ten-plus years. To me, it's going to go to nothing sitting there. If the board, if they like, why don't we just sell it to somebody? Sell the mounting components. There might be a hose or two missing off of it. To sell it to somebody to be able to put it to good use would be a big plus, rather than let it sit there and it's going to rust away and go to nothing. To me, next thing you know, it's going to be scrap metal. I have nobody in mind. But just to sell the thing to somebody for a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars, the thing is doing us no good.
The scrap value would be more than that, I would think.
I don't know, it's a light plow, it's just a western. I don't think so. It, it probably only weighs all total. Does it weigh five hundred? I doubt it's any more than that. The plow and the frame, and at ten cents a pound, that's fifty bucks.
Okay, no, I, I misunderstood what it was.
No, it's just a small western plow to the front of a pickup truck.
Okay.
And the frame. But if anybody knows anybody, it ought to go to somebody that can use it before it's completely gone, you know? Somebody'd be happy to have it, I'm sure.
Well, I want to say that you guys really did a good job.
Well, we tried.
This year, and it's, it's really appreciated.
I don't know how good it's going to go. We, we ordered salt yesterday. It'll be the better part of three weeks till we get our next load of salt. We're not the only township that's hurting. I know townships around us that are down to nothing.
How about grit?
Well, we can get all of that we want. And that's how they did the roads years ago. We have enough salt and cinders out there, we're going to have to use it sparingly for probably three storms.
When you call cinders, is that grit?
And, and a skid, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I...
Right.
The quarter inch stone. But we're going to have to use it sparingly. This ice events and when these packing events take a lot more. It's a whole lot better if it just snows and you start the plow, rather than have to treat it several times.
But you reported that we were salving, cinder-ing, plowing, and checking sixteen days.
We spent sixteen days.
That's more than half the month.
We spent sixteen days of the last month with one, two, three, or all the trucks out there. Either cleaning back, salving, cinder-ing, checking for ice, it was one thing after another.
Plus all the maintenance on your trucks, you had issues with trucks, too, a little bit here.
You don't get nothing else done. And one thing in a year like this, it is so hard on the, our roads. I, I can see things on our roads that are changing. And it's so hard on your equipment, because if you go to wash a truck before you get them washed, the next snow event's here. And the material's right back on again. This, that salt residue on those trucks, it's hard on them.
You mentioned a number of signs that were knocked down.
Yep.
We don't have any latitude that we'll replace them, do we? Or they have to be X number of feet from the intersection of the road?
You want to keep them where they're off the roadway, where nobody's going to hit. Our signs are being knocked down at a regular rate. I just seen this one up here was hit again, Carol.
At the intersection?
Yep. This one's hit up here like every week or every two weeks. Our roads were never designed for the tractor-trailer truck that use for getting today. And that's why it's so important when you rezone land, that anything that is going to occur a lot of traffic, you try to keep it on your more open roads like six twenty-five, eight ninety-seven, Losh Town Road, which are state roads. We have some businesses on backroads, and for these tractor-trailer trucks, which our roads were never designed for that longer-length traffic, they simply can't make the turns. Just about all the signs are knocked down because of truck traffic. They're at School Road and Maple Grove, you know what I mean? If they're coming Maple Grove Road toward Bowmansville, tractor-trailer, and once turned in School Road for goods-receiving or, or quality foods, that's, that turn was not built. Same thing up here at the intersection. This was not built with that island in the middle. And it's just one of them things, what do you do? But we lose, we lose some signs every month because trucks are driving them over.
If it wasn't their first trip, wouldn't they be more inclined to go up eight ninety-seven and turn right onto School?
Well, some of it is their first trip, up eight ninety-seven. Now wait, turn right?
Now wait, no, instead of coming east on Maple Grove and taking that real hard turn, continuing north on eight ninety-seven and go right on School?
Yeah, I don't know where some of these trucks are coming from.
Most of the time, most of the time when they're at that intersection, they're lost. Seriously, that is the case.
I noticed one thing, there is a business in the township, I'm going to have to talk to the man. His drivers, and I was curious the other morning, it was early in the morning, we were out, and I followed that truck, and I was heading that way anyway, coming to High Pointville. They are actually, and I never thought it would happen, using High Point Village with the tractor-trailer trucks to cut across the Maple Grove Road.
Because they don't want to turn up here at the intersection.
Yep, yep.
That's technically illegal. That's illegal, the trucks on that sign there or something.
That's a, that's not rated for that. If you're a CDL driver and you get pulled over, you're getting fined.
Well, they got into the one person yard. They took down our...
Big time.
Took down our stop sign, took down the electric...
Street light.
Street light. And, but...
And they're going to Acme is where they're going to.
But trucks are becoming an issue, but our roads were never built for it.
Most of the trucks are, trucks going to goods for washouts.
Some of them, yeah.
It is just incredible, the number of trucks going for washout, cattle trucks.
Well, there's only so many facilities like that around.
Right.
I never realized I'd see the day, traveling with my grandfather when I was a little boy, that you'd have to wash the cattle truck every time you hold something.
Every time, yep.
But they got to wash them down because of diseases.
Yep.
So we get to wash our trucks over there free.
Right.
Goods let us wash. But we can only wash till ten o'clock in the morning because the trucks line up and
That's right.
Those guys got to keep delivering hogs and...
Tremendous number of washout trucks.
And it's getting to be a big business, because they've got to wash, government makes them. And then...
And ain't free.
I'm learning this, it doesn't even have to give a snow event or ice. When them trucks leave that facility and head on School Road toward eight ninety-seven, all this water's coming out of the trailers, and we get an icing condition from that wash bay down past Goods Farm, ah, then I got ice problems. But, but now, just recently, they ask if they have a little pickup truck with a little bin on the back, Carol's seen it, if they could have some salt and cinders to put it on there. Well, it's only a half a scoop of the backhoe, and...
Plus they're creating the issue.
Yep, so...
If they didn't do it, you'd have to.
Well, yeah, and what they're getting from us is far less than what we're getting from them by the use of those washbays.
Just a couple dollars' worth goes in that little hopper that they have. But it's just something that, times are changing, more traffic.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
I have two items on my engineer report tonight, one that's actually included in my report, another one that's not. I'll touch on both of those. The first is on page three, the Glen Webber Land Development. I've issued a recommendation letter for a financial security release in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and ninety-four cents in my letter of February seventh. Would I ask for a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve a release of fourteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and ninety-four cents.
I second it.
For Glen Webber Land Development.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
The other items will be covered elsewhere on the agenda. The only one that isn't noted is the Roy Good property on West Maple Grove Road. I believe in your packet, you have a letter from D. Lehman at DEP dated February the sixth. Just to refresh the board, last month, if you recall, the sewer authority had actually entertained a request by Mr. Good to connect to public sewer to abate his ongoing malfunction that he has for a rental property up there. The board of supervisors approved with conditions, based on the authority engineer's recommendations, to allow that connection and include that property in the five thirty-seven sewer area, because it was not previously within the public sewer service area. At this point in time, we've been receiving a lot of correspondence from DEP to Quinn Holler to require connection of a temporary holding tank on that property to abate the sewage malfunction until the public sewer is available in that area. Recognizing that it may take some time to do the physical connection to the public sewer area, DEP, as noted in this, this letter before you of February sixth, is looking for installation in accordance with Chapter seventy-three DEP regulations for a holding tank to serve that property until connection's feasible. A letter will be going out to Mr. Good related to that, again, in accordance with the DEP regulations, to allow him thirty days to prepare, design, submit a holding tank permit application, and get that permit issued for that temporary holding tank. My recommendation tonight to the supervisors would be to consider a motion for a conditional approval of a holding tank agreement for this property to help expedite the matter for Mr. Good, subject to the review of the township sewage officer and also the solicitor. At this point, we don't have a design, we know basically what size tank they will need to put in. We did a field inspection with DEP, pumped out the tank, it is a five-hundred-gallon tank that serves that rental unit. And it is being used aggressively by the tenants that are on the property. So we have to implement a periodic pumping program of that septic tank until, again, the, the holding tank can be installed, and then eventually the public sewer connection's feasible.
He, excuse me, he has...
Sure.
Thirty days. Within the thirty days, can we get him a temporary hookup to the sewer system?
The public sewer system?
That's what Fred and we were talking about last night.
Right, and I, I think that's, that's one of the things, we can discuss that as well. The issue that we have right now is that there is an ongoing malfunction. And by DEP regulations, the department actually has the authority to overwatch and monitor the administration of that Title twenty-five seventy-three with malfunctions with the sewage officers. She feels, just based on the timing element of connection to public sewer, that it may take longer to get that physical connection happening versus a holding tank that could go in, you know, within a short amount of timeframe. Obviously, weather plays into all of this at this time of year.
He has a five-hundred-gallon tank?
He has a five-hundred-gallon tank currently, yes.
And they want, she wants him to put in a fifteen-hundred thousand, fifteen thousand?
The regulations say they have to have enough for three days' worth of sewage, based on actual amount, or at least one thousand gallons. So my thinking is that they would allow in series the five-hundred connected to a thousand gallon to use in series as far as acting as a holding tank. They would have to cap the five-hundred-gallon tank, currently that goes out to a drain field, and that's the source of the malfunction. However, if they capped that existing five-hundred off, which the pumper said is possible, and then connect it to another thousand-gallon tank, they could have a fifteen-hundred-gallon total capacity to serve as that holding tank.
What is the figure for an EDU? Is it two seventy-five?
Based on public sewer, it's two sixty-two and a half. If it, if you're using it for planning purposes, DEP uses four hundred. So there's a little discrepancy. The actual use of a regular residence, assuming dishwasher, washer-dryer, that, those types of things, you're probably looking at seventy-five gallons per person per day. Hundred and fifty gallons, two hundred gallons is probably a reasonable number that they would use at a maximum level, assuming they're using all of those things at the same time.
If Mr., if Mr. Good has given permission to put the construction ahead of the paperwork, did he give it an estimate of how soon he could be hooked up?
To the public sewer? My knowledge, no, he did not.
Now, if he doesn't, if he doesn't respond favorably to the letter that he's getting, he has the right to appeal?
He does have the right to appeal, and typically, and I'll, I have to discuss this with Bill, in the past, I know we've dealt a little bit with sewage issues in the past with, with a few issues down the road. But my understanding is the appeal actually goes to the supervisors under local agency law. So that is how it's actually referred to in Title twenty-five. And I know the notice of violation I did when I was the sewage officer years ago was, was local agency came to the supervisors, as far as appealing that notice.
So it's, it's possible that while the appeal process is ongoing, that the permanent connection could be made or be closed?
That's correct, yes.
And it certainly appears that Mr. Good has made a good faith effort.
Yes, yes.
Mike, I see, I see in DEP's letter, she's noting here that a planning module is not going to be required for him to hook up?
That, and again, I just saw this letter for the first time today.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
That's news to me, I'd like to discuss that with Fred Ebert, I have not had that chance to do that today.
Because that would also, if that is the case, that would help...
That would also help expedite the connection.
Because that will take some time.
That's correct.
But isn't, isn't a planning module necessary to change the five thirty-seven plan?
That was Fred, in my opinion.
Right.
The DEP letter we got today says otherwise, from, from the planning specialist. So I'd like a little more clarification on that with, with them one. Honestly, what that does is it bypasses both planning commission of the county and township supervisors, and DEP ultimately has a hundred and eighty days to review that planning module. So that, if we could remove that paperwork element and merely go to a... a physical connection, that's obviously gonna shorten the time period significantly.
But there'll certainly be a timeframe that you'll need this holding tank agreement to be in place regarding...
Right.
And what do they require as far as the capacity of the tank, DEP?
It's a three-day, it's three-day waste or a minimum of a thousand gallons.
Thousand.
Yeah.
Do we have that language in our agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we did or not.
And the pumping, it also, we also have an escrow component.
Yeah, I knew that.
Goes along with the removal, and it's based on the gallon tanks.
Yeah, I didn't remember the thousand gallon capacity, three-day, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure we had it in there. Excuse me, Bill.
Sure.
Now, you say that he can appeal this, and then it's gonna come back to us?
Yes.
And that would be, how long would that take? It certainly couldn't be before the next meeting.
No, that would be not my, not be my guess, yeah. They have thirty days to appeal it as stated in the notice once it's issued.
This could, this could take several months then.
At which time it might be possible for him to physically connect. In the meantime, regardless, our stance from our office has always been just merely putting in a periodic pump and haul for the septic tank that's there. This newest push by, mostly by DEP for the installation of a holding tank, normally we would just put them on a periodic interval of pumping to abate the malfunction, reduce the amount of surface discharge to the property, be it, it might be once a week, that might be a couple of times a week, until you can get a permanent solution in place. The DEP stance, obviously, has been that because of the nature of the malfunction, the use of the system, the aggressive use of water, that another means has to go in, which is actually reflected in the regulations, that it can be used with a temporary holding tank.
But that would be quite an expense, purchase a thousand gallon tank and have it installed and plumbed, and then after, after all that, he gets hooked up to the sewer system and then he has stuck with a thousand gallon tank and...
Which would probably have to be pulled out, right?
Um, or abandoned, yeah. Usually it's filled in.
Well, in her letter, she says that the temporary holding tank must be installed as soon as possible. Well, as soon as possible could take into account the...
Weather.
Non-physical aspects. So, you're recommending that what we do tonight is...
My recommendation tonight, the sewage officer is going to be issuing the notice in accordance with DEP regulations because we have a documented malfunction. We also have direction from the DEP administering the five thirty-seven and overwatching the sewage program to apply for and receive a holding tank permit within thirty days. Again, they have the right to appeal. We also have to put them on a periodic pump and haul for the five hundred that's there until they can install the holding tank. What I'm asking for tonight is a conditional approval of the holding tank agreement, subject to the language being reviewed by the SEO and also Bill Cassidy, to move that process forward.
Now, you're asking, again, for a preliminary approval?
It's a conditional approval for the holding tank agreement. Yeah, it's just for the holding tank agreement. Every agreement has to come before the supervisors for action, similar to a stormwater agreement or other agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a little bit of discussion.
Sure.
I know homes that were hooked up and there was never no sewer that went to, paperwork that went to DEP, and not just one, I know several that have hooked up to our sewer and have never, the paperwork never gone.
Right, that's the way, that's the way the sewer authority used to work, it doesn't work that way anymore.
Well, where she even has here that they don't need that paperwork. Sewerage planning is not required by DEP to hook up a single property, and that's the way it was done in the past, and she's saying there it doesn't have, they don't need it.
Yeah, I admit, Art, it, that statement goes against what Fred and I are actually have come to understand, because every time we've connected someone in, outside of our sewer service district, we have to amend the five thirty-seven plan in order to do that. That statement's a little, I'd have to follow up more, and just having seen this letter today, I'd like to know a little more about that from, from Miss Lehman.
The complaint was addressed to her, was it not?
That's where we received the complaint, yes. Yeah, we received the complaints, they were forwarded from, from DEP, is my understanding.
No, but the, the resident, do you know whether he complained directly to DEP?
Yes.
That's what I heard, I think so.
The tenant is the one who complained.
The tenant, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
In our discussions last, last night, Fred said that his contact at the DEP, which was this lady, was giving him kind of like a hard time. Is that the lady who wrote this letter? That's totally the opposite of what Fred was saying, like this lady was, you know, like throwing up roadblocks and making it hard, now she writes a letter that says you don't even have to submit paperwork.
That's, that's our experience as well, Dave.
That doesn't make any sense at all, you know, unless somebody sat on her and told her, you gotta do this, or, you know...
But she's, she is the one that mandates a thousand gallon tank too.
Right, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
So, there's a bit of a motion behind the letter.
Unless you left the word out, like, like no or not.
Already...
That's all I, that's all I have on this report, is any questions?
Thank you. Okay, I move that we accept the roadmaster, engineer, SEO, and zoning reports as submitted. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Cassidy, you're up.
Yes, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation forwarded a letter back in January, January sixth, to the township concerning the weight restriction and the bridge weight limit posting for the bridge on Kramer Mill Road over the Little Muddy Creek. They want the maximum gross weight to be twenty tons for single vehicles and twenty-eight tons for combination vehicles. That is changed from the current posting of twenty-three single vehicle and thirty-two combined. The state has gone through an inventory process of bridges statewide and are asking that municipalities post the necessary signs to put the public on notice, and we need to amend our traffic and motor vehicle chapter of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh three, to make that upgrade, and I had forwarded a draft of the ordinance amending Section forty-nine of Chapter one oh three, which deals with vehicle weight limits, and the name of the road and bridge is stated there, Kramer Mill Road Bridge, over the entire length of the muddy, Little Muddy Creek for those weight limitations. We will post that with signs, I understand that Carol has that in progress already in process. East Kukaliko is going to be amending their ordinance to ensure that the same weight restrictions are reflected in their ordinance, and of course, signs will have to be posted on either side approaching the bridge as well as intersection nearby to give motorists warning of the restriction, so if they have to, they can avoid driving up to the, to the bridge and realizing they can't proceed, so...
East Kukaliko has done what we're asking the board to do tonight.
Oh, they've already adopted the change in the ordinance?
They authorized it to be advertised.
Oh, okay.
So, they're in the same process.
Same process.
It should be done around the same time if the board responds.
And we do have a time limitation, the end of March, for this to be accomplished, so what I'd be asking for this evening is that you authorize advertisement of the, of the ordinance, making a change to the weight restrictions of that bridge.
I make a motion that we authorize Carol to advertise.
Bill, Bill will advertise, sorry.
Bill, Bill to advertise. And that's an amendment to Chapter one oh three of the Brecknok Code of Ordinances, Motor Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance, Section one oh three dash forty-nine.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill, do you or Mike know how they determine that it's unsafe for twenty-two but safe for twenty?
I'm afraid I do not. It's an engineering study, Garth.
They have a checklist, do they?
They run through an analysis, it's a structural engineer would do that, and then they make a recommendation based on the rating, the load rating that they end up with by formula.
There's sort of some interesting sentences in the letter, structurally deficient bridges are safe, however, there are one or more components that have deteriorated to a point of concern.
Can they mandate that we repair that?
Yes, yes, sure they can.
But this is not at that point?
No.
They're just saying that it's, they're just recommending a reduction in the weight at this point in time. They're not mandating any corrections at this point in time.
Interesting.
How long will this, this last?
What, this weight limitation?
Right, until it's inspected again?
I guess the next engineering study.
Which is every year?
Every two, every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah.
It may not change after that either.
That's true.
Hard to say.
Depends.
Any maintenance or modifications would be shared, of course, by the two municipalities, so we have joint responsibility under the second-class township code.
Okay.
It may change quicker, they reduced one in Lititz to nineteen tons and then brought it back up to twenty-three a month later.
Nice.
Is that based on logic or complaints?
I know what was based on...
The coin comes up heads for tails.
It was based on the fact that they passed that law. As soon as they passed that law, that raised the money, a whole bunch of those restrictions vanished.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Already...
We're not the only sneaky persons.
Alrighty, Park and Recreation Board report.
Okay, a couple months ago, I mentioned to, brought to the board about putting hitching, horse hitching posts over at the cemetery in Bowman's, across from the Bowman'sville Park over at the cemetery. I guess it was brought up to Gary again about what, what our intentions are. The concerns are when we have horses, the only places they can hitch up are behind usually the bleachers, and people make the turn off Maple Grove Road and the horses are right there, a lot of times they get spooked and, plus they leave a mess, you know, so we need to get them off that corner, we have nowhere else to put the horses. So, the cemetery had graciously said we could put hitching posts in there, the part of the cemetery that they're not using, that we use for parking right now for the Bowman'sville Days. However, they want us to come back and tell them what we are willing to pay them for that, that opportunity to use it. There is about an acre of ground over there that we can have mowed as part of our reimbursement to them, or we can make a monetary donation to the cemetery. And we're just coming to you and asking, we feel that's the best place to put the horses at this point, but we need to know how you would want us, since we're using, it would be Gary probably to mow that area, so we'd be using him as an employee to do that, or do we want to just give flat donation to the cemetery?
So, we're talking about both land and also installing the posts, hitching posts?
Who would install the hitching posts?
I guess that would, I would have to find out, I assume it would probably be, you know, Gary, some of the volunteer group. But it would be used for like the ballgames, when there's tournaments up there during Bowman'sville Days, you know, so we have no place else really to, you know, put the horses at this point in time.
Well, what about the mess that the horses make? What you said was a mess the horses make.
I, I brought up that we should have, you know, if someone has a horse, that they should be able, you know, clean it up, I don't know, I mean, we would have to post something to that effect. You have to clean up after your dogs, right? I, you know, I, you know, I don't know how we handle that at this point in time, but, you know...
We could put baggies there like they do in some places, you know?
New York, make them wear diapers. But, I mean, it's just, you know, something where we need to, you know, sort of figure out a way of handling it over there. We have the hitching posts over in Brube Grove that we have behind the, near the tennis courts, we have them up above, you know, so we have a few around the park over here, we just doesn't, we don't have anything over that way.
So, the difference is that this is on private property?
Right.
Bill, any problem there?
Yeah, to get permission, obviously, from the private property, Art.
Which is what they're giving us, but they want us to sort of, you know, monetarily, you know, either give a monetary donation or mow the, mow the lawn for that area, and if we're already over there mowing, you know, Gary says it's not a big deal, it's about an acre of ground, but it would have to be your choice how, how you want us to...
Is this a one-time donation, or is this a yearly donation?
It would probably be a yearly donation, same thing, and the mowing would probably, basically Gary said probably, it's not gonna be like a weekly thing, it'd only have to be done a couple times through the summer. Yeah, it's that field where we park during Bowman'sville Days.
Seems like mowing would be a better, a better choice.
Question?
Garth, my question would be is if there was being a person that falls there, whose liability insurance would it fall under, the townships or the landowners?
That was something I was wondering myself.
Just simply because?
As well as, you know, if it's, is the entire area, how, how much land are we talking about here?
About an acre.
For the, for this?
It's a park, yeah, well, it's a, he's gonna say, the horse, where the horse hitch would be?
Yeah.
Well, that's, it all depends on where they're putting it, I mean, they'd probably put it towards the back, I would think.
They, they use it already.
Yeah.
The park, for park functions, it's already being used.
Right.
With the parking lot.
For parking, yeah.
Yeah, we use it as a parking lot.
The issue is not a new issue.
No.
Okay.
It's putting the hitch, if they've ever had a problem.
More of, you know, something of permanency regarding the ability to get over the private properties, land, you know, and they would be interested in some kind of an easement or something like that, or a license agreement that...
Yeah, they haven't asked for that, they just...
Who comes to the grassland?
They do.
The church.
Church does.
They do.
Church does.
Yeah.
Well, if, if someone falls and that person wants to file a lawsuit, they're gonna sue not only the township, but the property owner as well. So, if it's a condition of the land that causes the person just to trip and fall, again, because the property owner owns it, they've got a duty, and if we are inviting the public, the township, to use it, I would certainly think that the township could be viewed as having a duty as well to ensure that there is safety of getting to and from that location, so there'd be liability potentially for both, both.
Wouldn't the liability be the same whether they came by car or by horse?
Exactly. Like I said, it's, that's what it's been for years and years and years, you know?
Yeah.
Go ahead. How many horse and buggies have you ever seen there?
Where?
At Bowman'sville Park.
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
How many have horse and buggies has anybody ever seen?
We've seen them there before.
How many at a time? Maybe, maybe one?
Bowman'sville Days, you have quite a bit parked over there.
I never noticed.
What do they call those anchors that you take with your buggy when you park your horse somewhere?
I don't know.
Well, horse anchor, let's call it that.
Yeah.
Big piece of cast iron, old piece of railroad track. Big piece of cast iron, old piece of railroad track. Shouldn't that be the owner's responsibility?
Do we want to, and, and, you know, do we want to set up a situation where we encourage this in such a tight community and setting?
When we have them over.
Brew Baker Park's completely different. That's set up for all the activity and we have. Another thing is, next to the restrooms. Why not, you could put in railing there for three or four.
A lot of traffic here.
Lot of traffic, but.
I mean, there's more, there's, you know, foot traffic going to and from.
You'd have to pull them in a ways. And there is the playground, but a lot of things could happen with that church property in the future. I don't see that we should be mowing anymore. We are getting into so much mowing. It's going to be time for the board very shortly here to decide, are we going to hire summer help? You know, because.
They're already parking there, right?
Yeah. Well, their cars are parking there, not the, we don't have a horse hitch there.
We don't have a horse hitch, but there are horses parking there.
Never seen them there.
Not where they're talking about.
Where are the horses parking, if there are horses parking at all?
Behind, usually behind the bleachers.
Which bleachers?
Because they tie up there.
Which bleachers?
On the corner of the, of the baseball field.
Out on the road?
I've never seen them tied there. They'd be on the road.
And that, that's the, that's the problem. They are going into the road.
They'd be blocking the whole road.
That's where they, when they go over there to play, that's where they're.
There's a lot of ballgames going on down there.
The only place I've ever seen one tied up was a little maple tree by the restroom.
Yeah.
I've actually even seen them down by the tennis. Parking lot, the parking lot over by the tennis.
And where did they tie up there?
No.
I think it's just to one of the trees there.
You just use it.
There's only one tree there.
Right.
And it's over by the.
As long as they don't officially.
See, I think that the township might be insulated from a liability to a certain degree if we don't do anything to encourage, but signs up, you know, say, you know, park, parking with a directional sign or something of that nature. If someone chooses to go on that property on their own, that might, you know, reduce, I would think, and maybe eliminate the chances of someone going back on the township. We're not saying, you know, we're not telling you to park there. If they do it on their own accord and the property owner doesn't have any problem with it, I think it would be the property owner's, you know, issue regarding the condition of the, of the land. Once we start inviting people, you know, and taking affirmative steps to encourage people to give them some kind of incentive to park there, then it's a little bit more involvement on our part.
But Bowman'sville Days is our police directory.
Oh, is that right?
That's the only place to really park during Bowman'sville Days. Or if there's a big tournament, a tournament, even the base, the kids' baseball games, that's where they park. Because there, there is no parking around Bowman'sville Park. I mean, we, we have, how many spaces over by the tennis court? There's maybe six?
More than that. Ten or twelve.
But it's not that many compared to all the baseball games that we have up there and.
If you put a hitch up, which I'm not sure where it'd be by the cemetery, it's sort of, would the Amishman know that he's going to take his buggy over there and hitch up? Is he going to look over and say, "There's a hitch, I'll go over there"? Or do you have to put up a sign that says, "Buggies"?
I think it would just be more of a, word of mouth type thing, you know. They always find.
You're right.
Yeah.
So presently, we're parking cars on the church property with their blessing. And now, excuse me, not church, the cemetery. And now, are they the ones that want the horse, the horse rat, the tying posts or whatever?
I'm not sure who presented that. I know they had asked about the, you know, sort of exchanging some, I think probably what it is, is they've been, we've been using that area for so long without any, any payback type thing, and I think now they're kind of asking for something. Maybe not even just for the horse hitches. It's, we use it as their park, our parking lot. Without that parking lot, it would really be hard to, to even have, put the cars for a baseball game over there. All your parents park in that parking lot and, I guess now they're looking and saying, okay, we've let you do this for years and years. Give us something in return. I, I think that's, they probably, that's probably how it was more presented.
Do you think it would be simpler if we just made a donation and let them do what they wanted to do with the property?
Definitely. Definitely. Yeah. I, I don't think we should put hitching, hitching posts there. They should use their, what do you call it, a hitch anchor or a horse anchor?
Horse anchor.
A horse anchor.
It's not going to happen.
Right. It's not going to happen.
You've never seen them?
No, I've not.
Really? Big cast iron.
I know, I know what you're talking about, but I've never seen anyone.
What, they do lift them up into the buggy after they move on?
I personally would use a cinder block. I've seen the cast iron ones. Yeah, they take it out of the back of the buggy, flop it on the ground, tie the harness off.
That buggy had going up the big hill on six twenty-five the other day when he was barely making the hill in the snowstorm Sunday night.
Yeah, I think. Has the, the cemetery organization been requesting some funding at any point?
I think that's where they're coming at now. They have until this point.
Because I mean, if the.
Now they are asking.
If the ball teams, the tournaments, the, you know, the little league organizations that utilize it each come up with a, even if just a small monetary amount every year, they're actually right. That, that field has been used for parking since I was a wee lad. And we just all assume that it's there for us to use and it's, it's their property. And they've been very generous with that for all the years. And I, I agree, they probably deserve something, but is it the township's responsibility to do that? I mean, there's a memorial field association that has, is part, that basically owns that field. Would it be not more in line for them to try to provide some form of monetary funding to compensate them for the use of this land? More so than the township?
Is that, is that memorial fund still?
Memorial Association is still very active, yes.
Is it?
I, I think this issue didn't even come up until Park and Rec asked about putting hitching posts in, right?
No, I figure, I think they came to us before, you know, about that, putting hitching posts over there. We didn't go to them. They came to us.
That land is township land, right?
It is not. The park.
The park.
Parks.
Yes.
The park land.
Yes.
But there is a Bowman'sville Days committee. And like Jeff said, you know, there's, do, do the teams pay the township anything for the field?
No.
No.
No. Not even for the lights or anything?
No.
No.
Yeah, I'm thinking too that the users would, it would be more appropriate for the users to give a donation.
Now, I should, I should say, let me correct that. The Bowman'sville Athletic Association that uses the fields does not pay. But when we rent the fields, they do pay. There are Friday night groups that pay to use that. And I assume that they also park in that. Now, that's when we do, yeah, when we do rent it, they probably still use that. There are times that we have paying people. I would.
Majority of the time.
Say majority of the time. If I had to equal it out, I would say not. I mean, I would say that the township has some obligation because we do rent the ball fields out and that's where they park. But the majority of the time it is for Bowman'sville Days and the Bowman'sville Athletic Association.
I can take that back to the park, you know, and tell them, I mean, more detail them your concerns and what we discussed tonight and see what other options we, we have.
You, you want to send what to where, you said?
Take it back to the Park and Rec Board next week's meeting and just tell them, you know, our conversation here and see.
The only thing I know is Gary came to me one day, a horse and buggy came, a team, and tied to the little maple tree. With a horse, like they usually do, paw the ground and pawed it up. And Gary said to me, it'd be nice if we could get permission to put horse hitching posts over on their land. And that's the last I heard about it until now. Somebody must have approached the church. I don't think the church came to us.
No.
I, I, I can't tell you for sure which way that went, to tell you the truth. I just know how it was presented at the, at the meeting.
Yeah, you would be able to just put a hitching post up. You'd have to put something down there too, because it would take no time at all for those horses to have that dug down two or three feet and it would be a horrible mess. If you didn't put a mat here or a concrete pad. Right, exactly.
But there's a difference in parks. You have your little itty-bitty development park, your tot lots. You have a more larger setting like Bowman'sville, which is a community park. And then you have your larger park like Brew Baker, which is more a regional park. The regional park is the one where you can set up much more activities and the larger operation. These smaller parks, a lot of them are not designed for a lot of extra activities. And that's where you stand at this, at this point. I don't know of any, maybe Carol knows, any playing people with teams that rent Bowman'sville.
Only the baseball.
Yeah, but I mean, the pavilions that they bring horse and buggies.
No.
Like they do in Brew Baker.
Well, maybe, yeah, lots of them up there. And I would have to look at the book, but I would say maybe on an occasion one. But I would say most of those rent Brew Baker Park versus Bowman'sville Park. Bowman'sville Park rentals are long-time people who have yearly rented them for many, many years that keep coming back over there. Those are the people that rent Bowman'sville Day, Bowman'sville Park.
Well. We know who uses it. It, it sounds like for a couple of hundred bucks, you could make everybody happy. But. I think we'll take your suggestion to go back and get a little bit, some more information as to how it started. And does, does the cemetery organization want something and what is their preference? And then we can go from there.
And I do agree with Leva, you know, but I believe, you know, that some of these groups should contribute, contribute to some of the expenses we have at the parks. I, I was involved for thirteen years with Little League in, in Reading. And we donated money to improvements on our ball fields. We raised money for the, to build the concession stands. That came out of Little League money. We raised the money. We did it. And I think, I really think some of these organizations that we are so nicely giving Bowman'sville Athletic Association and Bowman'sville Days, you know, I think they should start contributing to some of the repairs on the parks and some of the, you know.
Bowman'sville Days did last year.
Yes, we, yeah, we had to ask for that.
Yeah, but I agree, yes, they did though, yes.
Yeah. But we asked, we had to ask for something because it's like, you're making all this money, what are you doing with it? You know, put it back into the parks for the, you know, and we did get money from them for that. But I think that, you know, the, I don't know how the Bowman'sville Athletic Association, whether they are hoarding any kind of profits or if it's just, they get enough funds to cover their equipment for their, you know, but if they have an access, I think they should donate, donate something, repair concession stands, you know, we're putting all that out. I think if they're getting something back from it, I think they should, to give it to.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, old business. We have a resolution for annual appointment of a CPA.
Do you want a motion on that now?
If there are no questions, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion. We appoint Winehold Nickel Company LLP as our certified public accountant.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is resolution number two of two thousand fourteen. And next, Maple Ridge North has requested a ninety-day extension. Request coming from Steven Bensinger, their engineer.
Yeah, they had, you know, contacted me, their attorney. They do under the MPC have a period of time, you know, to record their plan, but they didn't meet conditions that were established for their approval. They have been working through those, including the financial security estimates that they're working on with Mike. The homeowners association documentation was reviewed by myself and, and Mike. Have communicated our, our issues and suggestions to their attorney. I'm not sure that we have gotten back the information, Mike, on the financial security estimates at this point in time.
I actually commented back to the engineer on what was missing in their initial estimate. They provided that today. Actually revised. We'll have a recommendation letter probably for you for next meeting. So that's in process.
But I would, I would recommend that the extension be granted because we are working through these issues.
I so move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The two thousand fourteen road program. We had a workshop meeting with supervisors, our engineer, Kim Montag, Beltap, and Steve, Steve Culp, one of our road workers also attended. And Mike has written a memo sort of summarizing the, the meeting. We've also had discussions about joining the municipal group for joint bidding. And whatever we choose to do with that group this year has to be decided tonight. And I, I think that what we're looking at for, for the group would, would be micro, micro surface type A treatment on the development behind Weaver Store.
And line painting maybe?
Pardon?
Line painting.
We hadn't talked about that before, but our, our line painting was done in, in November. And I think most roadmasters agree that November is way too late to do road painting, line painting. And, and from what I've seen on the roads, the, the paint hasn't lasted too well. Would, would you agree with that, Arthur? Well, there's a couple of problems. The paint nowadays is water-based. And I believe the reason, the way they get these bids and get them lower is they don't apply them thick. They can adjust the amount of paint they put down. And if you get a cheaper price, let's just use this for example. Instead of that much paint, you get that much paint. And we have lines that were painted back this fall and they're gone already. They're, they're gone. And you only get what you paid for.
But didn't they do the mixing yet in our parking lot?
Well, they have to add paint into that sprayer tank. So they, they carry a truck with these big containers of paint that they have to pump over into the other truck. But they can adjust that. It's any, any type of work you do, you can do a good job or a bad job.
Whenever we get line painting, do we get bids?
We go through the co-op program.
Lancaster County Co-op.
That's what we've been, we've been doing before, Lancaster County.
Yes.
And what was the price, about thirty thousand dollars?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one thousand it cost us.
Twenty, almost twenty-two.
And it is a big plus. People that get older. And it is a big plus. People that get older don't see as well.
How much do we save by going through the county?
Versus?
Just contracting to do it, or, I mean, I haven't done it, but.
Well, they go through the expense of the bidding process. We, we don't have to pay any of the bidding process. Which, as you know, the advertising for something like that can get quite expensive.
But we could also, if we put it up for bids, we could specify the kind of paint, how much paint.
Well, a certain kind of paint is governed by. Pennutts, um, regulations, but, yeah.
You can re, ask about the beading.
Yes, they have to be reflective beading, yeah.
Is, is that something we, we do get glass beading?
Yes, you have to.
They have to put it in.
That's what the contract states.
Well, I, I never.
Know what the thickness, thickness is spec'd out at?
I don't, honestly, the line.
Cause there's a, there's a thickness spec usually. Now, I don't know how you measure two thousands of an inch really, but. But, but there's usually a thickness spec. Yeah, you won't find one.
But I never noticed any lines glowing, like they had glass beads in them.
Yeah, they have to. That's, that's state law. They don't want, yeah.
It glows the day they put it down, and the next day it's gone.
Water-based.
They don't last long. I, I think that the, the bidding consortium of our adjacent townships paid. Within a penny the same amount as, as we paid through the county consort, county consortium. And, uh. I, I haven't heard any complaints from the roadmasters of East Earl or Conorven or the others about. The, the paint that they got, and I, I don't know whether the problem was the quality of the paint or when it was done. And, uh. Uh, from what I hear, November is not, not when you wanna paint a road.
As a matter of fact, we paid the exact amount the co-op paid last year.
Then I think we should go with the co-op.
And if we get done earlier, we, we're always pushed off to the end. I don't know why.
I know, and I, I contacted them before the contract even went in place to get on the list first, and we still ended up being towards the end.
Then it's damp out, or it's right after a rain, and the roads are drying good, and there's places where they actually. Have to stop painting, there's a little puddle of water in the road, and the roads are way too damp. So when do you think the best time would be? June, July, August? Warm out, at least when it's warm out.
Consortium, when does the consortium get lines painted? I think that's.
I, I thought the same thing.
Pardon?
Wondering when.
Oh, you're wondering this?
The consortium does theirs. I mean, if they're, yeah, if we had, we had talked about maybe having more control by going with them. Than versus going with the county, county co-op program, that maybe we can get it done sooner.
Well, well, we couldn't do any worse than what we did with the county.
Especially with the same price.
Right. So I think we should go with consortium.
I would be willing to.
Arthur, is, is that?
I'm fine with that. It just seems like years ago, you could line paint the roads and they stayed pretty good shape for two years. They started to fade some, but now they don't even, some, they don't even make it three months, some spots.
Was, was that a different kind of paint back then?
I think, uh, everything's water-based now. Okay, Mike, you, you also were talking about the RC two fifty, uh, versus, versus the. The rubberized filler. And.